We got a wire last night, you all would like to have one.
I don't think, unless you have... We appreciate that, unless you have trouble hearing us, if you do, just raise your hand or something. Usually, we don't have any trouble being heard. I taught school to you. Hold it down back there. Okay, I'd like to tell this meeting, everybody's going to some budgeting and this evening, we're gonna have two, four grade students to help us, or lead us into plans, we're far down. Emesias and Braxton Kirk, here they come. You guys come right up here wherever you'd like to face the flag. And then we'll follow you. Braxton, don't get up on that. Okay, why don't you all turn and face the flag and then you tell us when we're ready to start, okay? Braxton, put your hand up, we'll know where to go, okay?
Please, please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank y'all too much. Good break. Thank you, my honor. Appreciate that. Before we go any further, I just want to thank everybody who welcomed us here at Harts once again this year. We look forward to coming up here. We like to see everybody, look around and all that. All I've heard for a week or two now, what are we gonna eat that thing? I may have been guilty of saying that too. And once again, we were well pleased, well pleased. Mr. Limble, I don't know, if we had any more of their chicken and dumplings in that, that really would have been a good pro. We do appreciate all the hospitality we get and we come to Harts, it's just a traditional thing. We all, we really appreciate all you all, all you do. Kids here, such a tight knit community and a tight knit county that we have, so we appreciate all you do. Thanks for having us to see, appreciate the evening here. We're always available, if you need us, contact us, contact the board office at any time. Should there be an issue or virus or something, contact the superintendent's office and we'll go from there. And what I'd like to do now is introduce everybody that is with us this evening. We'll start at the far end there. That's Larry Wilkerson, he's a board member, maybe you can make that, Mr. Wilkerson. Next is Fred Curry, Fred is the vice president of the board. Next is Jeff McKeon, we're superintendent of schools. Over here on my right is the flower, the bunch Carol Smith, a board member. I'm Steve Priestley, president of the board at this time. Mr. Bill Limble is there, he's our assistant superintendent. And over here, in that chair, is our, wanna keep us all straight, Brendan Paus, he's the executive secretary of the superintendent, and also, you might as well put a slash board, that's kinda of that too. And, once again, always be aware of the people that are from the press. We have Mr. Sean Donahue, and he, as part of his assignment to cover the board, we also think he's somewhat of a spy, he's always there. All that Sean does, and I think everybody that follows the county news knows that Sean shows up at events for not only school events, but virtually everything that goes on here. Mr. King is our federal programs director, Kirk King over there, he's trying to hide, but now I see that he's there by himself, he's been ostracized this evening, that Kirk's with students from the board staff, so they all do a good job of asking all the things that they did. We come up with these strange desires at times, but they do their best to try to meet our needs. We're thankful, and we have Mr. Mathis here now. We hope that you all are happy with that too. He's been fortunate enough to bring him to Lincoln County here a couple of years ago. We were well placed to find him at Lincoln County Hospital. So, we heard he was gonna get this position, we thought that that would be good for everyone, and we hope that's gonna get to all of him as time goes on, give him a little time to get his feet wet. But, Mr. Mathis, we're glad to have him here. So, at this time, let me ask for approval of the minutes of the September the 5th, 2017, that's the motion. Mr. Wilkerson, thank you, I'm Mr. Smith, is that an all yes vote? One thing, just, once again, Rowley Baker, our other board member, isn't able to be here, he's on a trip, he's on the phone, he's in an airport. Here's Brendan, California, somewhere. But anyway, he's on the phone here, so he may interject something, if you can hear it, I'll share it with you. He just wanted us to know that he would be happy to leave a little bit early because his plane is on the part, so he'll be with us for a while anyway, but Rowley understands his wishes too. Okay, is that all, an all yes on the vote for approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, that's an all yes vote on that. All right, at this time, we have public comments. There's a sheet down there, but just for your information, anytime that anybody wants to come to a board meeting and speak to the board at a board meeting, you may do that. You do not have to be on the agenda. All you have to do is come in and sign that pink piece of paper, whatever government is on there. And then, when we get to this portion of our agenda, I ask that there's any comments, and anyone who's listed there may speak and address the board. Now, there's only one limitation to that, is we aren't able to get in a dialogue with you, because you're not on our agenda. So, you may speak and whatever your thoughts are, we certainly listen to them, but we can't like give them back and forth discussion with you, because it's not an agenda item. The open meetings law makes us, it's required by the communities, that you make everything available to the public when they talk about it. So, if you follow any governmental agency like ours, we'll always put our agendas out three days before a meeting as required by Western Michigan law. And everything that's on our agenda is listed there. So that way, anybody in the public out there, they know that on that given night, this is what we're gonna be doing. If they see something on there they think is really good, or they don't find, they have the opportunity to come and voice their opinion on those things that are listed. But if they aren't listed, we aren't able to have a conversation about it. But once again, you may still sign in and express yourself on something, and certainly, you listen to whatever you have to say, that's what we have to do. And, and when it's necessary, I'm sure Mr. Rick, it probably makes another two, and follow up on that, on his opinion a day or so later. But just for your information, so, but tonight, no one has signed in to speak with the boards, we'll go down now. The next part will be presentations and things like that, there's things that are actually listed on the board agenda. So if we had somebody who wanted to speak on a particular topic, they would have gotten hold of Mrs. Powell the previous week, Wednesday, but we put our agendas out on Thursday, and she would have listed that item on our agenda. But tonight, we don't have any other item except for the LSIC evaluation, that's Level School Primo Council. That's required at the Department of Education with every LSIC, every school, on an annual basis. So, this is the first one that we've done this year, and that's the opportunity for the school to share with us things that have been going on to schools, activities, maybe some things you're proud of, maybe things you think you haven't either. And also gives us the opportunity to maybe ask some questions about those. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mathis, or again, at the beginning of the production, Ellis I C, Mr. Mathis.
I would like to start off by, you said that you were fortunate to have me here, I feel very fortunate to be here. And I'm very thankful to be here. And I appreciate your confidence in me and allowing me to be the principal here at Harts. And after that meal, I'm really glad I'm at Harts, because as I was getting some notes together, I heard several people say, "We do this often." So, I've already gained a couple pounds since I've been here, so I'll probably continue in that pattern. But wonderful job, and I wanna thank the staff for the work that you've done, the parent volunteers, thank you, and God bless you, appreciate all the effort that you put into preparing for this evening. And Mr. McCann, tell your grandmother that I am a fan. I am a fan. Not only were her chicken and dumplings delightful, her biscuits were right there with them. And Mr. Limble and I discussed the term "salt." And we both know what that is, and we both did that. But, I hope you don't mind if my presentation is brief, nor if it is simple, because I do not have technological device set up. I'm just here to talk to you and have a conversation with you about some things that are going on. I've been very, very impressed with the staff here at Harts. There, you mentioned that it's a tight school, tight community, I've noticed that it's not only a school community, it's a community school, where the needs of the kids are met, and they go above and beyond every day, and I've been thoroughly impressed with them so far, and I'm glad to be a part of it. If I'm not mistaken, we may be at this time, the only school in the county that's growing. And we have increased enrollment by over forty students so far this year. And we're very thankful to do that. And we're glad that the community is supporting us, and that kids are enrolling on a regular basis. But I put before you, Mr. Preacher put it on nice paper for you, but you have some data, some test data in front of you, could be, if not, I have more. There you go. It's very succinctly put together, we have the grade level, we have a number of students that were tested here at Harts Pre-K A, and the percentages of proficiency at Harts Pre-K A, the Lincoln County proficiency, and then the state proficiency. And the first page is English Language Arts, and the second page is math. And if you don't mind, I'd like to begin on the second page. I wanna draw your attention to something that's pretty readily noticed. If you will notice, not only here at Harts, but also in Lincoln County, and then also in the state, if you'll notice, at the third and fourth grade level, you have the highest percentage of proficiency in math, not only here at Harts, but also Lincoln County, and also the state. And last year, I came before the board and did a short, brief presentation with my math department as to how we were approaching math at that time in Lincoln County Hospital. And the reason that we had made those changes, this substantiates that. Because during that time, I made mention that at every grade level, the math assessment, and not only this assessment, but every assessment that I've ever viewed in my twenty-seven years, at each grade level, the difficulty of the math assessment and the reading language arts, but we've got a pretty good grasp on that, and we'll get to that in a moment. But in math, the application level of those math assessments increase every year. And if you'll notice, you have over forty percent at the state and here at Harts, up to the fourth grade. And nearly, you have forty-seven percent here at Harts in the fourth grade last year in math. But then you'll notice a decline. The reason behind that is the same, same for the county, same for the state. And by the time you get to the high school, the entirety of that assessment is application level in math, which basically means that you have very little, if any, computation in math. You have real world thinking problems in math, word problems, and the students not only have to be able to proficiently do math computation, but they have to be able to think mathematically. And at each grade level, the test adds more of those application problems, as I know that you understand and you know that. Well, what we have done to address this, and we have some scores that are relatively high, and we're even above the state at the fourth grade level last year, but then we have some that are clearly below the state level. And we're close, within two points of the county level, we're actually two points above, but in reading language arts, we're a couple of points below, the county average. But how we're addressing that is, we began the year as math teachers coming together and putting together a math process, the same one that we had in place at the high school, to address that issue. And we began the year by building a final. And the final was based upon the state standards, and we took each state standard, and we put together a final that was at least at the application level on Bloom's Taxonomy, to where we would have those upper level maths problems on that final. And that is what we're teaching for. And we're implementing that across the board, K through eight. And hopefully, we will see an increase in the math scores here, as the same as we did at the high school. But then we started that math process, and we brought in people to train, and I appreciate you funding that and taking care of that for us, but we're hoping that this will be an increase. Now, the data that the state provides is useful, but at the same time, they do not provide an item analysis. In other words, each, each situation on that assessment that the state uses, we do not have the availability of an item analysis, which is very difficult to pinpoint the problems that are in, that are involved in math. We don't know why they're there, but we know we scored poorly on this content standard, but they're so brief and so vague, it really doesn't give us any information. That's why we've adopted this system. This system allows us to understand and know that we have to get those math problems in the classroom, the same that they're gonna look on this assessment, and we teach toward mastery. And we do not move on to new material until we have mastery in that classroom of the standards that we're covering at the time, and then we bump it up, the same as we did at the high school level, and we're practicing that here. Now, reading language arts, we have, we have implemented a couple of things to let you know what's going on. We have brought in trainers, actually, we used Lincoln County people to provide this, but we have provided training for our entire staff that teaches English Language Arts with sentence writing strategies that come out of the University of Kansas. And it's a very simplistic approach to writing, however, it is consistent, K through eight, here at Harts now. We have a consistent writing system from the very beginning in kindergarten, actually pre-K, all the way through the eighth grade. And it builds in stages and steps, and everybody knows what everybody else is doing, and we put together that plan. And one of the main things about this writing system, and hopefully, we'll be taking another look at it later, and I'll get in greater detail, hopefully, as our test scores increase, but there are formulas that the students memorize to write sentences. And once they memorize those formulas, they think as they're writing, and they know that they're meeting all the requirements of a sentence as they write that sentence through those formulas. So that's how we're addressing English Language Arts and we're addressing math. We started two other processes that are through the University of Kansas to help with vocabulary, it's word mapping and word ID. And one of the, one of the other things that we're doing, and I wanna thank the county for bringing this in, is the leader in me process. And every morning, we begin our day, as the buses unload at seven twenty. As the buses unload at seven twenty, we're meeting in the gymnasium, and we meet as a school. And we begin every day the same, to have uniformity and to have consistency, and we meet in the gymnasium as an entire staff and as an entire student body, and we do the pledge allegiance, we go over morning announcements, and then we do our synergizing, which it's called, with our hand motions with the seven habits of Covey, which is the leader in me process in the school. And we're already seeing good things happen there. And you see, you've seen some posters out and about about the seven habits and about the leader in me. Couple of things that we're doing to help with staff morale, we are spotlighting two individuals, we've included both service and professional personnel in this, and we're doing spotlights on those individuals every week. And what we do is we take a little three by five note card, and we write something positive on that note card. And Ms. Blair is taking care of this for us, we write something positive on those note cards, we put them in Ms. Blair's box, and then each week, she collects those for each of those individuals, and she binds them, and she gives them to them, because some days in education, as you know, are not as good as others. And when you're having a bad day, it's good to look at something positive, somebody thinks about you. So we have those, that process going on as well. But there's a lot of, a lot of wonderful things going on. I, I think we have a safe school, I think we have a disciplined school, and I believe we have a clean school. And we're gonna continue that, and I appreciate your confidence in me and allowing me to come here. Any questions if you would have?
Anybody have anything to add? Could you explain the grade configuration, where there are self-contained classrooms, or maybe departmental lines, or how you're set up?
Yes, we have, we have, we start changing classes when they get into the third grade. We have a teacher that specializes in math, and we have a teacher who specializes in English Language Arts and Social Studies, and we have a specialization in math and science. And we start that at the third grade level, so they actually start switching classes at that. Now, at kindergarten, pre-K, first, second grade, they're self-contained. But then we have a, it's different when you get to the sixth grade, it turns into the middle school schedule, and they have science and social studies teacher, and they have a math and English Language Arts teacher. And then they go through the rotations of the art, health, PE, music classes as well.
But you, maybe one of the things that I need to hear, we often hear about writing, didn't you, first of writing, first of writing, all of this.
It was coming back, it's now, it's now part of the state curriculum. Yes.
We've seen that all the time, everybody asks that question, you're the first one out of government to answer this, not the schools. As far as, you said you had a safety, now, honestly, we do the fire drills.
Yes, sir.
Have you begun, have you locked down?
We have not begun that process yet. We started getting amused to the fire drills, and that was, that was interesting and entertaining with the pre-K students. But we will be having lockdowns, we will be practicing shelter place, also evacuations.
I know the staff that you come there, they've done that, and that's something that's most important, and we just try to emphasize that, so.
Yes. We have had four fire lines already, and we will begin the other soon.
If you could give me any comments, I'll let you give just general comments, but you can think about this school and the pre-K, and I think we've had too much there.
I think we talked about four, and we had, and drugs included on the same page.
Yes.
And, and we thought this property that has resolved, uh, what's been happening, people want to see an increase in test scores from the American experience.
One, one thing that I always try to do at the high school level, and I, a mutual friend of ours, Mike Ferguson, he told me years ago, he had been a principal at the elementary and the middle school level, and I've been a principal at the high school and the middle school level, and he said, "Tab, if you ever get the opportunity to be a principal at the elementary level, you should do that." He's because, "I wish I could go back now and be a principal at the high school level." But he became a superintendent, and then he retired. But I have thoroughly enjoyed being with babies. You get hugged and not mugged. And, but I did, within the first week of school, I was sick. I, I've been, and they call them baby germs. And you get hugged all day long, and I thoroughly enjoyed that.
I like, always like going down the hall with something hanging on your leg.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I'm thoroughly experienced, you, with, tell Mr. Ferguson, sometimes a little.
I wish.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like now, just to let Mr. McKeon, I'd like to let him speak there for a little, just about being here, you have anything to say?
I always enjoy coming to Harts, whether it's here for LSIC presentation or just to visit. I wish in my job that I had the opportunity to do so, love being around the children, the little ones make little, you know.
Me too.
By your side. But, you know, I just appreciate all that you do. You know, I say all the time, there's no hard work, and that being a teacher, you know, how exhausting that can be, both physically and mentally, at the end of the day. And I just, I've always said that, I mean, this is a wonderful school, great work takes place here, you all love the children, the children love you right back, and I have not had a sense, it's always been a wonderful experience for me, to come here, to that sense of family that's unique to this area. Very much appreciate it.
All right. Well, this time, if no one has anything else, we'll go ahead. Do you guys have anything you'd like to leave? I don't think we're gonna be here too long, but if you wanna start cleaning up or eating some more, go write in, you can start by, I agree. Okay, get on the motion, going to the administrative section, please. Mr. Curry, correct it by Mrs. Smith, okay, Mr. McKeon.
Item A is a contract, for you, LLC, provide technical support in the areas of math, language arts, and all county schools for the 2017, 2018 school year, according to the terms of the contract, which is attached, and this activity is funded through Title II. Item B is a contract with Susan Mullein, provide professional learning for Lincoln County schools, and traumatize children, building a trauma team, according to the terms of the contract, which is attached, and this activity is funded through Title I. Item C is approved to post a new teaching position, effective immediately for the 2017, 2018 school year, halftime at Guyan Valley High School, halftime at Ranger Elementary, special education teacher. Item D is adoption of revised policy, effective for the 2017, 2018 school year, thirty-one twenty-one twelve, substitutes in the areas of critical need, shortage, which is attached. If you look at that policy, we have every possible teaching certification under this, including elementary education. Item E, the following adults, students who drive a school bus. Item F, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bike chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have complete volunteer orientation. Item G, marching, universal students, hanging the flag, perform required observation, full job of education, that West Ham will have injury, falls in this.
Anybody have any questions, I think there's an administrative items. If not, I'll call, Wes, is that an all yes vote on those items?
Yeah.
Right, let's go to the finance section, do you have a motion, please? Carol, make a motion. Who, who's second, I'll strike the third second. All right, Mr. Ellis is working on next week's financial strike. So, are we gonna ask Mr. Limble to fill in for him? Is it subject?
Item A, scheduled invoices totaled six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, paying forty-nine cents, attached invoices available, public review, and got it off.
You're sure it's six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, I'll check it.
Make a sure. All right, is that one item, then he's approved of the invoice, is that an all yes vote?
Yeah.
All right, let's go into personnel section, do you have a motion, please? Mr. Wilkerson, second by, second, Mr. Curry.
Okay, item A, appointment, short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, transfer of professional personnel, pending official certification. Item C, transfer of service personnel. If you looked over the effective date, the one, Mrs. Carrie McConna, she went on to be, next year, she's with the student pop, and she will not be allowed to, she was fine. Item B, transfer of service personnel, meaning return of regular employees. Item E, appointment of extracurricular personnel. Item M, leave of absence. And item G, retirements and resignations. And also give you a handout, showing where we are now. Midway, we still have a special ed position, we have a third grade, we'll have a third grade after the resignation, except the night we find the teacher still that position. If you look on one resignation, Melissa Belcher's leaving, but she cannot leave for a certified teacher for a still that position, we can leave it that way. Dubal reposted Title I. Hamlin will wait on interviews, it's closed, for the second grade, West Hamlin's okay. Guyan Valley math will be reposted, the halftime special ed, the halftime, that will be posted, Ranger, halftime counselor, halftime special ed. Counselor at Harts, at Lincoln County High School, we have an English, I think we posted, will be posted special ed position, this, one of our teachers that had special ed certification, took practice, got an English certification, so she moved, and then the school, they really, really, kind of, you know. The county will still look at the speech language, that's all. And you've heard Mr. Mathis speak there, they picked up forty, one state. They picked up forty-one students, is that correct? And I think forty-one, forty of those, one of those students, they have high students. And we're looking at that, we're trying to look at the schedule, Dr. Lowe's looking at everything we can. And may have come back and asked for a special ed teacher, but we didn't work out the schedule. We'll be out of compliance, and we're getting monitored in, no getting some more between Thanksgiving and Christmas or on.
Monitoring by...
Special ed. Special ed.
Roughly, that's the new students who have ideas. You're going to give another call?
Okay, okay. Another item, we discussed about pullback, hiring a parent and family engagement facilitator. Give everyone a draft copy. And what I'd like you to do is to look at this, and if you have any comments, share them with us in the next week or so, and we'll bring back something that will be approved at next meeting. One of the questions was about the salary. If you look at the last page, that's how we come up with that salary. It was a salary schedule nine, which is like an eighty-two, and that was the same that Donna, Gerald was getting paid. And that's how we come up with that. It's that much, it amounts to eleven eighty-eight dollars plus premiums. That's what we're looking at. And one of the other questions is basically the same things that Donna did in this old job. One of the things that was concerned was on the second page, number thirteen, this person will also be responsible to help coordinate with the special ed department the special Olympics and Spring Games that week.
We're just maintaining that name.
We're just maintaining that name. And the reason we do that, special Olympics, there's only certain kids that participate. But Spring Games, we let some others that, you know, if not, we wouldn't have that many participate. And the thing of it is, they've been doing it since second, third grade. It's hard now to say, you're in the fifth grade, and you've been doing it, so no, you can't go this year. That's what we're praying. But there's some that are really qualified, and we want to, especially with some, that are combining it together.
Okay. If we could, we would let, just remember, with Wednesday, if we have any concern or ideas or whatever, that would be good. That would, if you want to put it on the next agenda.
Yes, sir.
That way, our agenda goes out next, tomorrow. Well, I don't think I'm making any of that today.
No, no, no.
So we will, yeah.
Just give me something, Marv.
Okay. So everybody would, I look at something, if you have anything, just... Soon we can, Bill Moes, soon we can proceed to get somebody, boy, that...
We'll meet for next week, I'll put it towards, at Ranger.
All right. Okay.
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have anything about personnel, any questions or concern? If not, is that an all vote on the personnel schedule?
Yeah.
Now, comments and concerns, board members? Mr. McKeever? You throwing your thunder? And this thing here. John?
The sewers, the sewage plants. What's the latest on those?
The latest that I had, my conversation with Derek Gosden, is there's some question as to whether or not these would be surgical plants that are butt ground or whether or not they would actually be in-ground. And I think he is waiting on some information from the department or something.
Okay.
I'll check when I can back. But it's my understanding, any work would take place, take place next summer.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding, we're putting the installing hose, and it'll still be operable.
Yes, that's what we were told, on this process. Then we ran the thing out, it wasn't as good as it seemed. That there was an issue with getting those above-ground surgical plants ordered and lived. I've got, you said, the office going on. And he was trying to find out if additional remediation needed. And I think they gave someone, the S B A, told me that it may actually be justice as chief to, where it puts someone in breath.
Do you have any comment on that, whether they would move it in the existing location? And what instrument they can do there? All right, if we don't have any, we're going to turn this meeting for September one sixteen thousand seventeen at one o'clock, it was one o'clock minutes, I think I wrote that in. At the court office in Hampton, have lunch, please. Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith.
That's an all... Rowdy is looking something there. Is that an all yes vote?
Yeah.
All yes for you two, Rowdy?
All right.